Welcome to this evening's council meeting for...
Monday, February 6th. Mayor Ted Shaffer and with me are my council colleagues, Councillor Jack Arnold, Councillor Paul Albrecht, Councillor Rudy Stortebum, Councillor Gail Martin, Councillor Val Vandenberg, and Councillor Nathan Pahal. And with us from the staff, we have Darren Light, Director of Corporate Services, Paula Cusack, Deputy Corporate Officer, Francis Chung, our C A O. And on the other table, we have Gerald Minchuck, Director of Development Services and Economic Development, Rick Baumhoff, Director of Engineering, Parks and Environment, and Kim Hilton, Director of Recreation, Culture and Community Services, and Rory Thompson is at the back behind Darren. So, the first thing we do is the Committee of the Whole. Committee of the Whole will commence and will provide council the opportunity to hear input from the public and allows council a greater opportunity to speak to and debate specific agenda items. And I have a motion here that council commence Committee of the Whole. I need a move in a second there, Councillor Stortebum and Councillor Martin. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous for. And I would like to invite Darren Light, our Director of Corporate Services, to provide an overview, please.
Thank you. Mayor Shaffer, members of council and our viewing audience, I'd like to take this opportunity just to go through our 2017 financial plan. It's a bit of an abbreviated version of what I presented on the first two readings of this bylaw. And tonight I'll focus on the capital improvement plan, operating cost drivers and tax rate effects. In the capital improvement plan, we have a total of $21.8 million in projects itemized. Some of the larger projects are included on this list, which is partially funded by the $6.4 million in casino proceeds the city anticipates to be receiving in 2017. The city has re-implemented the half a percent infrastructure levy in 2017, which will add $122,500 to the general operating transfer to reserves to fund capital programs. Now on to the operating side of the financial plan. The financial plan includes $44.4 million of operating expenditures, over 70 percent of which the operating expenditures are funded through property taxes and utility charges which will be billed at the end of May each year. Based on the results of our recently completed community survey and feedback that we've received from the neighborhood meetings, a number of priority areas were identified and they include public safety, homelessness, the maintenance of parks, boulevards and trails, infrastructure renewal, recreational opportunities. City council has heard from the taxpayers and the financial plan was developed to address these priority areas. The expenditure gap is $883,595, which will require a 3.61% revenue increase to close that gap. This includes the half a percent infrastructure levy that I've already discussed. It also includes new growth revenues of $235,000 and it means that during 2016, new construction of buildings like condos or commercial buildings resulted in new taxation in 2017 based on the value of that construction. We call this new growth taxation revenues. On the cost driver side, we did have some revenue reductions from 2016. Tax penalties and interest and funds received from utility companies like Fortis, B C Hydro, Telus and Shaw saw a reduction in revenues in 2016 and we have therefore reduced the budget expectations in 2017 from these sources. We did have some revenue increases although, B C Assessment Authority actually uncharacteristically increased our taxation revenues through the assessment appeal process last year. Usually the revenues decreased on appeal, but in 2016 they actually increased. We did have some engineering admin fees and building permit fee increases based on historical trends. Business license fees are increasing 2%. Filming permits are increasing. Parking fines, parking space rentals particularly relating to filming permits are increasing. And the city has begun renting a portion of the municipal owned property beside the Parks Operations Centre, which is generating an additional $20,815. City staff wages make up $12.7 million of our operating budget, which is supported by property taxation revenues of $25.7 million. A provision has been made for Q P and I A F F and management salary increases. It also includes an increase of $124,550 for staff hours to operate and keep clean the city's newest asset, which is the Timms Community Centre, a building that we're very proud of, which is in line with the recreational opportunity priority that I discussed earlier. As noted earlier, public safety is also a priority in 2017. Policing is the largest department in the city's budget, which is about $11.7 million. It is 45% of the taxation revenues we collect. It's a big piece of our budget pie. We have 51.35 RCMP contract strength, member contract strength. The city shares the integrated teams based on 75% of the five-year rolling average crime rate and 25% on population. We also share the RCMP contract costs with the township, again using the integrated team formula. In the current year, we have allowed for 3.3 vacancies. A vacancy is caused when a member is maybe on sick leave or parental leave. The actual contract costs are increasing $631,330. Wow, get that out. There's a 2.5% increase in wages and pension benefit costs and a reduction in the vacancy rate is being the primary cost driver in this regard. And that's the 631 there. As well, the city shares the municipal employees working at the detachment with the township of Langley. The sharing is based on 75% of the number of RCMP officers, based on that same 75 crime staff and 25% population. And the other 25% for the municipal employees is based on assessment in the two municipalities. A new part-time position was developed to help address social issues like homelessness. The community liaison coordinator will work with social service agencies and the RCMP and the business community to address critical social issues in the city. The position will oversee the implementation of the homelessness strategic plan and the community crime prevention strategic plan. The same public safety category, the city will be increasing our bylaw enforcement resources and the fire service will be implementing Ecom radio system to improve the interjurisdictional Another priority relates to parks, boulevards and trails. Significant funding has been allocated to parks and trail improvements in this capital improvement plan, as well a new corridor improvement plan will be implemented to enhance maintenance on walkways, boulevards, sidewalks and medians. The Fraser Valley Regional Library is increasing 3.57%, or $44,000. This increase will allow 2% more for books and material purchases throughout the library system. In the utility side, garbage fees are remaining flat in 2017 at $180 for a single-family home. The flat rate water and sewer funds will see an increase of $25. That's moving from $50 to $75 in each of those utilities. In addition, the sewer rate will be increasing six cents per cubic meter. So what does all this mean for taxation? Tonight, we're just discussing the portion of the property taxes that the city controls, which is about 62% of the amount that's on the property tax notice. The other amounts relate to school taxes, TransLink, Metro Vancouver taxes, which are also shown on the property tax notice, but they are not directly controlled by Langley City Council. Council has been trying to slowly shift the tax burden to the business properties, getting closer to the metro average of for every $1 of residential, there's $3 in business taxes. In 2017, the city of Langley will be at that ratio and business and light industrial properties are seeing an increase on average of 5.39%. For the average strata dwelling, which is on the screen, which makes up 63% of our residential housing stock, we will see their city taxes increasing by 3.2% or $39 a year. The single-family homes will increase $170 or 5.92%. There is only one rate that city council can apply to all residential properties, so we can't differentiate between strata units and single-family homes. The assessed value of a single-family home is climbing 10% faster than strata dwellings, causing the differentiation in the tax effect. So our single-family homes will pay the city $3,051 for services in 2017. On a monthly basis, that's $254 and as you can see on the screen, things like policing are costing $63 a month, recreation $20 a month, parks $10 a month, just as an example. I'd like to thank the rest of the department heads who assisted with putting together this budget, as well as my staff, in particular Mr. Graham Flack, for their efforts in putting together our 2017 financial plan. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Light. So pertaining to bylaw 3011, 2017 to 2021 Financial Plan Bylaw, I'd like to ask the corporate officers, are there any speakers on the list?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are not.
Okay. Anybody from the public in the audience like to comment? None? Well, I shall now have received or take a motion that Committee of the Whole rise and report. Councillor Arnold, Councillor Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Light. Adoption of the agenda, that the February 6, 2017 agenda be adopted as circulated. Councillor Martin and Councillor Pahal. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, Pahal. Adoption of the minutes, the minutes of the regular meeting held on January 30, 2017 be adopted as circulated. Councillor Vandenberg, Councillor Martin. All those in favor? It's unanimous for. And the minutes of the public hearing held on January 30, 2017 be adopted as circulated. Councillor Albrecht, Councillor Stortebum. All those in favor? It's unanimous for. Now, we've just heard from Mr. Light, so the business arising from the Committee of the Whole, there's a motion, this is the third reading of the bylaw cited as financial plan 2017 to 2021, bylaws 2017, number 3011. Any a motion for this? Councillors Stortebum, Councillor Albrecht. Is there any discussion at all from anybody? Councillor Martin.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, I think I know the answer. The community liaison officer is a contract position.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I'd just like to thank Darren Light and his staff for putting this together. It's not an easy budget to put together. I'd just like to point out that under public safety, we're adding $1,087,000 and change to public safety, which is a lot of money. So we heard what the public had to say and this is everything from bylaw enforcement to policing to fire, the community liaison, Ecom radio. It's quite a financial plan that we have under public safety. And this equates to 4% alone as a tax increase into public safety. So it's very significant. And one of the items that Mr. Light discussed with me earlier today was the casino revenues. And the casino revenues this year offset tax increase by 2.5%. So the casino, your taxes would be higher by 2.5% if that wasn't there. And using casino revenues, every $1 borrowed, and it's in the document here, requires 60 cents to be paid in interest over the 20-year term of borrowing. So if the city borrows $1 million, the total cost over 20 years is $1.6 million, which equates to a quarter percent tax increase. So since this casino has opened up in the city of Langley, we were very fortunate to be able to do a lot of infrastructure program. We built overpasses in a few places in the city. We've built the Timms Community Centre. We've added a lot of value to the city that a lot of people may not see. And this equates to in the vicinity of $73 million since the casino has opened up. And that's all been poured back into this community. And that's a significant amount when you consider that other communities are struggling out there to find the funding for their infrastructure. And we have a policy of putting it into the city that way. So it's a significant amount. And again, I'd like to thank yourself and Graham and the rest of your staff. So, anything else? Nothing further, I'll call question. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous for. Now we have one delegation here, Patrick Metkowsky from the Langley Care Foundation, which in short is the Langley Lodge. And please step up to the seat that Mr. Light just warmed up for you.
The hot seat?
The hot seat. Normally it is.
Thanks for having me today.
Yeah, well, welcome. Be close to the mic because it's a very difficult mic. There you go. And the mic is yours.
All right. Thank you very much. So we've got our five minutes to reintroduce you to the Langley Lodge, the Langley Care Society, the Langley Care Foundation, and of course, thank this council and staff for their ongoing support for the Langley Lodge. We're just down the street. For those that haven't been to see us, I think everybody's popped in at some point or another over the years. So some information, just reminders about who we are, what we're doing, and then a little bit of touch up on the fundraising side of things. So for slide one, I just put up some, three pictures. The last one's dated 2014. It's kind of the date of the picture, but our capital campaign wound down 2011 roughly. We got everything completed in the capital campaign. We operate the non-for-profit, equal access accredited residential care home known as Langley Lodge, been part of the community since 1974. The Langley Lodge, name of the building, has an auxiliary. It's owned and operated and managed by the Care Society. And a few years ago, in 1999, the Langley Care Foundation came into being. Healthcare got more complicated than the Care Society. Care Society wanted to focus on that, the foundation came into being. Mission of the Care Society, provide exemplary care for the aging population in this community. We serve the fraillest and most dependent people who in most cases have limited financial resources. We're home to 139 city of Langley residents that depend on 24-hour skilled nursing care. No private shareholders. We are a, as I said, a society and we also, the Care Foundation is a registered charity. We're fully obliged to the community and continue to rein true to our roots. No dividends to pay out, any dollars we have left over goes back into programming and services for the residents. We're a home, first and foremost. We're not an institution, very, very big difference. The auxiliary, they do some fundraising, but at the end of the day, they came into being decorate the building at Christmas time, put together Christmas presents, just for the little things that don't come into play with the healthcare system. That's what the auxiliary is there for. The Care Foundation, as I mentioned, we're a registered charity and our primary mission or objective, raise funds for the Langley Care Society. We do fundraising for the elderly in the community, but our number one client group, we're out there to support the Langley Lodge first and foremost. Zearing in on it, programs that stimulates and encourages active living among our residents. It comes down to, there's a daily activity calendar. It would be empty if, maybe not empty, let's say there's three or four things per day that would be going on in the building, give people the option of something to do. We fundraise, we make sure that there's seven, eight, nine things per day taking place in the building. So everybody has an option. If they want to get out of the room and participate in something, we have it. Art therapy, horticulture therapy, music therapy, and art, music, horticulture, and a pastor, maybe a pastor as well. He's in once a week. Let's choose this. Am I going to get a hook in five minutes? They're pretty strict.
There's a crowd behind you.
Don't be throwing tomatoes at me.
Give us a little bit more info on the Lodge.
Okay. So success of the Langley Care Foundation determines how robust that programming calendar is. Very simple formula, more dollars raised, more recreational programs for our residents. All residents have access to all the activities at the Langley Lodge. There's no additional fees. So whatever's on the calendar, anybody wants to participate, they have that option. The healthcare system, not to beat up on it, it provides the basics. We go beyond that. Volunteer Board of Directors, it said there's more that we can do and more service we can offer our residents. The therapeutic recreation program addresses things like boredom, loneliness, sadness, depression, and in extreme cases, hopelessness, that can and does occur for people that have lived full independent lives. Then something takes place with their health situation, they have a huge change in their routines. They come to Langley Lodge and it's our job to help them feel comfortable coming into a new home. Our success best witnessed through the radiant smiles of our residents. Many of them are pioneers or have been pioneers from the city of Langley and it is our honor to serve, right from cleaning staff all the way up to the C E O. We have a number of partnerships in the city of Langley. City Langley being a partner and as well, we're proud to say the Township of Langley is also a partner of ours at the Langley Lodge. The local business community is very kind to us, the Langley citizens, very generous. We're partners in different initiatives with the Langley Hospice Society, the Langley Senior Resources Society, various service clubs, Quantly University and Trinity, Western University. Everyone's coming to the building and helping to make that the number one home for folks that are needing and depending on our care. We're also a founding partner of the Fraser Valley Transportation Cooperative, easier to just call it the Bus Co-op. Our partners there are Magnolia Gardens and Langley Senior Resources Centre, again. Go back three, four years ago, we all had our buses. And a lot of times, there's four different buses parked in the lot and nobody's making use of them. So we share it. We come up with a system and a program to make, maximize use of that bus. I've got the point there, financially stable, so yeah, the organization's in good financial shape. However, without the foundation, without the auxiliary, the operation would be very, very different. We are well-known as an industry leader for a number of different reasons. Number one, we do exceed the needs and expectations of a changing senior population. During the medical assessment process, Langley Lodge is specified as the first choice. We hear that time and time again from new residents coming in, their families, they do choose to come to Langley Lodge, they've heard about us. Conversations that I've had and heard secondhand, thirdhand, common sentiment expressed by family members, many of the care homes in the surrounding area, we're all providing basic healthcare. Where Langley Lodge shines and goes the next step, takes it to the next level, nobody's ever going to pass away from boredom. Nobody's ever going to complain that there's nothing to do at Langley Lodge. And that's kind of what differentiates us and sets us apart from some of the other homes that are in the community, be privately owned or operated by the public system. It's worth saying, 20, 25, 30, 35 years, we have volunteers that have been part of our organization and there's a good reason for that. People stick because they see we're doing good work with the residents and we're bringing happiness to people that are kind of at the end of their lifetimes. Couple other points to celebrate, in October, the Chamber of Commerce had their, what do they call it, the Community Impact Award, 20th annual. We won it. We've made the applications a few years. Always came, you know, left standing at the altar. This time, we came home with the trophy. We're feeling good about that. Twice in our history, we've been going through this accreditation process. It takes place every four years. In 2012, we were awarded exemplary standing, meaning all the residential care homes that went through the process, there's a number of checks and balances just to see how we're doing and a number of different measurements. Scored 100%. 100%. We did this process again, again every four years, just went through it in 2016. We didn't get 100, but we were at, I think, one check mark short of that 100%. So that's eight years in a row. We're not just great in Langley, we're not just great in the Fraser Valley. This is in Canada. It does not get any better when it comes to senior care and elderly care. Number one. On our governing body, two different boards, there's the Langley Care Foundation, Volunteer Board of Directors, and there's the Langley Care Society, volunteer group of people with the board directors. Ongoing recruitment, ongoing professional development opportunities are presented. But these are volunteers that have passion and care about what we do and the services we provide. Want to thank this council, thank all the different players that participated in helping to make some decisions with regard to the community grant program. We really do appreciate that program, whether it's lifts, equipment to warm towels and blankets, could be mattresses, could be motors for the different lifts in all the different rooms. That community grant program, year after year after year, this city council has helped us out with that. It does make a difference. City of Langley supports people that have survived strokes. The city of Langley has helped people that have arrived in our doorsteps due to fractures. There's people that are coping with depression, anxiety, and there's unfortunately many more people, year after year, that are struggling with dementia and Alzheimer's. But everything that the city of Langley does for us is helping the individuals that reside with us in the building. I also want to confirm that the grant is serving the community. It varies from month to month, from year to year, but anywhere from one-third to two-thirds of the residents at Langley Lodge do have roots, do have connections to the city of Langley. It's not individuals coming from all over the lower mainland. We have a few, but the majority of our population are from the city of Langley.
Would you like to get a few questions from council here?
Okay. I'll wrap her up. I'll say, so also thank you for that permissive tax exemption, also very helpful in our budgeting. I'll flip by that. And yeah, for sure. Any questions? Anything I can tell you about the Langley Lodge that you don't know or you always wanted to know?
I'll start at this side. Anybody have any questions? Boy, you're answering this side. I knew there'd be one. Councillor Stortebum.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Patrick. Always good to see you. Especially happy to hear your very positive and uplifting report and congratulations on your many successes and ongoing recognition in the care industry. And I have had the privilege of attending your board meetings and I know that you're very well-run. So basically, I just want to say thanks for coming and for the information and you've already answered all of my questions. I guess the next question is when's the next fundraising gala?
We have our annual galas typically in September, October. We're evaluating whether we're going to do a gala this year. We may look at alternative fundraising techniques, other ways to get the folks maybe onsite at the Langley Lodge. You're in our mailing list.
Very good. Thank you, Patrick. Always good to see you.
So the grant process is always interesting and this council goes through the grant process and there's two takes. So there's one at the beginning of January and another one in June, July. So it'll be interesting to see how it all works out. You know, we have, I don't know, 40, 50, 60, 80 different organizations applying and some organizations make it the first go around and then they reapply and get something in the second, so, which has happened a few times. So it's that old adage, don't, you know, don't count on stuff right away, you know, but ever be forever hopeful.
We will continue to knock on your door.
And fundraising, we're always open for galas. I know those galas always seem to drain my personal pocketbooks. I don't know. It's, there must be something that just, a big magnet at your doors, you know. So anyway, thank you for coming and we'll look forward to seeing you down the road.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Under the mayor's report, the next regular council meeting is February 20, 2017. The next regular council meeting after that is March 6, 2017. Metro Vancouver, Councillor Stortebum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Metro Vancouver Climate Action Committee meeting took place this past week in order to review our work and approve some very interesting and cutting-edge pilot projects that can be supported by the Sustainability Innovation Fund if approved by the Board of Directors. This year, projects include a genomics approach to anaerobic digestion optimization program for wastewater treatment, as well as a high-efficiency aeration demonstration project and a microwave-enhanced advanced oxidation process sludge destruction pilot project. Now I confess, the science for these projects is beyond my scope of endeavors, so I would prefer to direct council's information increase to the Metro Vancouver website. Additional programs recommended for the Sustainability Innovation Fund include exploring innovative access and pricing mechanisms to develop multipurpose direct-current fast chargers for electric vehicles, a national industrial symbiosis program to investigate benefits that could be found in waste diversion to value benefits that could be found in waste diversion to value-added uses, greenhouse gas emission reductions, job creation and clean tech sector growth. There's also grant recommendations for an earthquake early warning system and a smart watering application that can be used on your smartphone. In closing, I'm eagerly looking forward to seeing plans for the city's urban farm that was approved last year here in the city of Langley. As you know, with partners from Quantlin Polytechniques Institute of Sustainable Horticulture and funding from Metro Vancouver, we are planning to grow and distribute fresh produce for our community from the land used by the Hydro Right-of-Wake. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stortebum. Now, to Langley citizens' best friend, as I look out the window today, Mr Rick Baumhoff, Director of Engineering Parks and Environment and Snow Plowing.
Thank you, Mr Mayor and council. This is an update for February 2017. And the first slide is indeed regarding the snow event. This past weekend, staff, city operations and staff and equipment deployed in shifts all weekend to plow the city roads and city facility parking lots virtually on a 24/7 basis. And as we speak, they're out there again, doing as good a job as they can clearing all the streets. We have, over the past weekend, we used 500 tonnes of salt. So it's a significant amount of salt and I will say that our suppliers have noted that salt supply has dwindled, so it's going fast. So there is a need to conserve what we have and focus the amount of materials that we have on our main arterials and roads, the throughways. So we will be doing that over the, we're hoping that this will be a short-lived. By tomorrow, Wednesday, it'll start to warm up and we'll be in better position. But as of now, we'll be conserving the salt that we have for the main roads. So as well, city parks and trails are closed because of the amount of snow that we've had. City priority routes are available on the website for the public to view, that's city.langley.vc.ca. And also, just as a reminder, that property owners must clear the snow fronting their property along sidewalks within 24 hours of a 10-centimetre accumulation. Also, as an update, we have received our new 2016 aerial photos. So the last one was 2014, so when you go to the GIS system and click on the aerial photos, you'll get an option for the 2016 now. On the 203 Street project, the bridge, new bridge deck has been poured, it's in the first week of February. So that was good timing as well for the weather we're having. And the approaches will be done within the next couple of weeks and we're aiming towards the end of March to have this whole project completed. Also, as a note, the Metro Vancouver Water Supply Main Valve Repair, that is in need of repair soon, and it's a pressure regulating valve on Clayton-Langley Water Main. And the valve's located at 196th Street and Fraser Highway. That main must be shut off in order to complete this work. Because of the snowfall, the latest update that we had provided was we are going to do the test tomorrow and Wednesday. That has now been postponed until February 15th and 16th to do the field test. So the field test would involve shutting the valve down, but if there's any issues, we could simply open the valve back up. And the actual work, shutdown work, will be done February 27th to March 2nd, the actual valve repair. And during that time, we'll temporarily be receiving water from the township of Langley's water system. Current projects under construction, the traffic signal upgrade at 200th Street and Grade Crescent, 203 Street Roadworks and Roundabout Project, and the Penzer Action Park Current projects under design is a Baldy Creek culvert replacement near 53rd Avenue, that's near the entrance to Brydon Lagoon, the 200th Street Bridge Deck Replacement. So we're completing the design so that that can be started this year along with waterworks along 200th Street. The 200th Street Grade Crescent 50th Avenue Traffic Study, and we'll be reporting back on that fairly soon, within the next month. The three traffic signal replacements, Glover at 56th Avenue, Duncan Way and Eastly Crescent. And also, the 56th Avenue Utilities Project, the final design revisions and tender preparation are near completion and we're planning to tender in this month. Thank you, and are there any questions?
Questions. Councillor Vandenberg?
Thank you. Just curious about Penzer Park. Was anything gonna be done with the actual track for the bicycles this year? I had some parents contact me with concerns of the gravel that was put on there and causing injuries, so is that gonna be updated soon?
I had not heard that, but we can check into that. We had no plans of doing actual physical, other than maintenance of the jumps.
Yeah.
We'll be maintaining them and if there are issues, we'll definitely deal with those.
Councillor Pahal.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. I was actually quite pleasantly surprised when I went to Safeway on Saturday that the walkway along the Nickel Mackle that was on the city street was cleared. That was great to see and it was also great to see that the curb letdowns were cleared as well. That might be a reminder for some owners too, that it really helps people who have limited mobility or mobility aids that those curb letdowns are clear, because if they're not, you're pretty much trapped as well. So thanks to the city staff for taking care of that detail. A question I had about the water is, will there be any noticeable difference during the test or during the valve repair for Langley City residents? In either the quality or pressure or anything?
The water pressures will be very similar. You won't notice it coming out of the tap. The water quality, it's the same, virtually the same water. It's Metro Vancouver water supplying the township as well as ourselves. However, the township does have one well in the Brookswood area, so we will be getting some of that well water. We don't expect that it'll be much of a difference in quality. People may notice some difference, but you know, we're encouraging them, if there's any cloudiness in the water, just to let their taps run until it's cleared. But otherwise, it should be no difference in look or taste to the water.
Thank you very much.
Anything further? I'd just like to say, if you could pass on the thank yous to your crews and your staff that have been out there, putting in 12-hour shifts or longer.
Yes.
You know, for most of us sitting around this table, we go out and we shovel our sidewalk and our driveway and we spend two and a half hours out there and we say we're totally exhausted. Go inside, put our feet up. The men and women that are out there, they're putting in long shifts and it's hard, hard work. And hopefully that you could pass that on to them.
Absolutely, I will. Thank you.
And 2,000 tonnes equate to a million pounds of salt. It's a lot when you put it into little figures, the little figures into the big figures. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we have a recreation update from Ms Kim Hilton, Director of Recreation, Culture and Community Services.
Okay, so our update for recreation for February, starting with our special events. Valentine's is just around the corner, so for our youth, we have a guys versus gals Valentine's event happening this Thursday, February 9th. There'll be insane Valentine contests with prizes for the winners. So drop down to Tim's Community Centre from 6:30 to 8:30 and participate in this event. The annual BC Family Day is coming up as well on Monday and Tim's Community Centre will be open with a free event running from 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. There'll be a wide variety of activities in various rooms, including the gymnasium, bouncy castles, craft zone, game zone, something for everybody. So drop down and have some fun, February 13th, Monday from 11:30 to 2:30. It's that time of year again when we're holding our open house for the Cookie Monster Preschool Program for the 2017 and 18 school year. And this event, open house, is running on February 16th, so two Thursdays from now, from 5:00 to 6:15. Pop down to Douglas Recreation Centre at 20550 Douglas Crescent, pop into the Cookie Monster Preschool Room, meet the instructor and see all the great activities that the preschoolers do during their time with us. For more information, you can phone 604-514-2865. Another event for youth, they have a lot of activities to keep them occupied here in the city, is Castle Fun Park, and that's Saturday, February 18th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. The youth meet at Tim's Community Centre, they take transportation out to Castle Fun Park, have a lot of fun with all the great activities that happen out there and then we return to Tim's Community Centre. The fee is $40 and if you're interested, you can phone 604-514-2940. Just a reminder that our current recreation guide is the one that you see in front of you, Winter Recreation Guide. It is loaded with opportunities for people of all ages. Opportunities are ongoing. Some classes have started and finished, but new classes are commencing within the next couple of weeks. You can also check out our website at city.langley.vc.ca and get this recreation guide there as well. We do have girls' nights, Thursday nights, at Tim's Community Centre for 12 to 17-year-olds. It runs from 6:30 to 8:30. They do a tonne of different activities and not to be left out, guys also have their own special night, the same night, different room, and more geared toward activities that they like to do. Saturdays is also dedicated to youth at Tim's Community Centre. Again, 12 to 17-year-olds, they have the games room and the gymnasium open to them and we have leaders that will supervise and guide them through various games and activities in both rooms. Now, I mentioned this last time, but we do have another course coming up on Sunday, February 26th. It's called Foam Rolling 101. It's one class, it's $12 plus GST and to register, you can phone 604-514-2940. Supposed to be really good to loosen those tight muscles. Bosu Boot Camp runs both Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays at Tim's Community Centre. My intention was to drop in yesterday to one of these classes, to the class, but the snow kept me at home. But if you have the opportunity, drop by and Saturdays, Sundays, 8:45 to 10 a.m. And it is a drop-in fee, $5.50. Starting in the next, on Thursday, running through to March 30th, we do have a water painting class for older adults. It runs Thursday afternoons, 1:30 to 3:30. If you're interested, please phone 604-514-2940. It is a popular class, so you should get onto that and register if you're interested. We do have a pro day coming up on Friday, February 24th, and we are offering a home alone program from 9 a.m. to 2 p.m. for 10 years and older and it's running at a Douglas Recreation Centre. So if you are wanting to consider leaving your child at home and want to give them some knowledge and experience, have the tools to leave them at home so that they're safe, this is the program for you. You can phone 604-514-2865. Learn to play pickleball. So our next class starts on March 2nd. We've had several people already signed up for this program. It is the fastest-growing sport currently in Canada and I think probably North America. We certainly have a lot of adults that are participating in the program during the week in our drop-in program in the Tim's Community Centre. So if you're interested in finding out more about how to play pickleball, please phone 604-514-2940 and one of our staff at Tim's will be happy to help you. Ladies, this is for you, a stronger you. It's a new year. You can get out there. We have classes Monday, Wednesday, Friday, starting February 20th. We have both Level 1 and Level 2 classes. And Tabata. So this is a new class that we've started. It runs Mondays from 3:15 to 4:15. It is a drop-in program. It's a, let's see, eight minutes of warm-up, you're doing 32 minutes of Tabata training, which includes repetitive circuits and you do some core training and then a stretch and cool-down. It is a drop-in program, $5.50 for adults. If you're interested, please phone 604-514-2940 or stop by Tim's Community Centre just before 3:15 and grab your card and go on up and give it a try. And that's my presentation for tonight.
Great. Questions? Councillor Pahal.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I don't expect an answer tonight, but it would be really interesting to see sort of the demographics of the people that we serve within our different facilities. So I don't know if that would be a possibility at a future presentation, but we do a tremendous amount of programming for youth and seniors and families and it would be really interesting to see how that breaks down, because I think it's a valuable service that we provide to the community.
Certainly, with one year of operation coming up at Tim's Community Centre, the plan is to bring some statistics back and we'll try and break it out as much as possible for both the different facilities and the different demographics.
Further, anyone else? Thank you for the presentation. Now, under bylaws, bylaw 3012, it's the Waterworks Regulation Amendment bylaw, final reading of the bylaw cited as Waterworks Regulation bylaw 2004, number 2550, amendment number 19, bylaw 2017, number 3012. Mover in a second, councillor Vandenberg, councillor Arnold. All those in favour? Against, it's unanimous four. Next item is bylaw 3013, Sanitary Sewer and Storm Sewer Rates and Regulation. The final reading of the bylaw cited as the Sanitary Sewer and Storm Sewer Rates and Regulation bylaw 2003, number 2494, amendment number 15, bylaw 2017, number 3013. Mover, councillor Albrecht and councillor Arnold. All those in favour? Against, it's unanimous. And we have a motion here from admin. It's a UBCM motion on varied tax rate for the residential class. And I have to read this out, I was told, and then I need someone to move it. That city council endorsed the following resolution regarding varied taxation rate for the residential class, whereas the province of British Columbia, through the BC Assessment Act, prescribes classes of property regulation, BC RIG number 438-81, specifies that there is one assessment class for all types of residential properties and the community charter outlines the municipal bylaw to establish the property value taxes in each year under section 197-3 specifies there is a single rate for each property class. And whereas the assessed value of the multifamily strata units are remaining constant and the single-family residential properties are increasing at an accelerated rate, causing a greater share of the property value taxes generated in the residential class to be borne by the single-family residential properties. Therefore, be it resolved that the province of British Columbia amend the BC Assessment Act and the community charter to allow the residential class to be split into two distinct residential classes so that the different rate may be applied to each of the residential properties and more equity, share the tax burden between the single-family residential properties and the multifamily residential strata properties. And two, that the varied taxation rate for the residential class resolution be submitted to the LMLGA to be considered by its members at the 2017 LMLGA convention. So I need a mover and a second, councillor Vandenberg, councillor Martin. Is there a discussion? Councillor Pahal.
Thank you very much. I would like to propose an amendment to the motion going towards the LMLGA, that we strike the second paragraph and replace the second paragraph as follows, and whereas the assessed value of the multifamily strata units change at a different rate than single-family residential properties.
Councillor Albrecht. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none. On the amendment, all those in favour of the amendment? Against, it's unanimous four. Now, back to the original motion. Any discussion? Councillor Albrecht?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank council members and staff for bringing this back forward. We did try to have this implemented at the last UBCM and weren't successful. So I think this is something that we're gonna keep trying to get fixed. So I think this is something that, uh, we're going to keep, uh, trying to get fixed, uh, so that we have a, uh, a more fair and balanced taxation approach to our residents, uh, in, in single-family and multifamily. So, thank you.
To, oh, councillor Stortebum?
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, and thank you councillor Albrecht for your comments. I just wanted to point out that, uh, this is a new tool that we're introducing to the kit of those, uh, options that city councils would be eligible to use, uh, when, uh, customizing their, uh, property tax, uh, income. And, uh, as such, uh, it, it provides a, a variety of different, uh, ways to, uh, approach, uh, and tackle the issue of, uh, uh, property taxation. So, uh, I, I think it's a very worthwhile tool and I recommend it. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a key line in there and it is "may be applied." I'd just like to ask, uh, Mr. Light, it's not unlike, um, the industrial, uh, class, light industrial and heavy?
That's correct. There are two classes for industrial properties, light and industrial.
And, a few years ago, quite a few years ago, it was split into, into those two categories, was it?
Yeah, I can't recall how many years ago, but it was several years ago that that was done.
So we're looking at doing the same only on the residential?
Yes.
Thank you. So all those in favor? Against? Councillor Arnold is against. UBCM, another motion here is sprinklers for four-story balconies. And this is from, uh, our fire chief, that city council endorsed the following resolution to be submitted to the Union of British Columbia Municipalities for consideration. Whereas in twenty sixteen, the province of British Columbia has suffered numerous large loss fires in four-story wood frame multi-residential buildings that could have been made, migrated by the installation of sprinklers on balconies. And whereas the British Columbia Building Code is based on the National Building Code with modifications specific to B.C. and the National Building Code two zero one five, and this requires the installation of sprinklers on balconies of four-story buildings. Will therefore be resolved that the minister responsible for housing immediately issue a ministerial order requiring the installation of sprinklers on the balcony of all new wood frame four-story multi-residential buildings? I need a councillor Martin and seconded by councillor Albrecht. Discussion? Councillor Martin?
So this is the motion. I should ask the question on why is it not going to the L.M.L.G.A. instead of straight to the UBCM? Just curious.
Thank you.
Uh, through the chair to councillor Martin. It will go through the L.M.L.G.A. That's the normal process, which will then be forwarded to the UBCM.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yes.
One read L.M.L.G.A. And the other did. Yeah, but they both will go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Stortebum?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief Thompson, for this, uh, very timely, uh, resolution, uh, to be brought forward by our peers for, uh, uh, recommendation to the province. Uh, it's, uh, my hope that, uh, this resolution would pass, uh, this evening and that, uh, we would have the opportunity to, um, send correspondence accordingly to our MLAs and, uh, invite them to, uh, take action on this so that, uh, when it does arrive at the L.M.L.G.A., it will have already been accomplished. Um, it is in keeping with, uh, a recent fire that we've had in the city and it is in the hope that we will not suffer that type of loss again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. Uh, new and unfinished business? Anything from anybody at the table? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn? Councillor Stortebum? Councillor Pahal? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you for watching us tonight.
Take a snow day.
Yeah, thank you.